Ladies and gentlemen, students of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day, and we thank you for all that is here that's gathered in this meeting. Father, we ask you, Lord, to give us the guidance, Lord, to give us the wisdom as a board. Father, we ask you, Lord, to continue to watch over and take care of all the students of this county, and, Lord, those that minister to them. Father, we love you, we praise you for all that you do for us, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
All right, has everybody had a chance to rate the minutes? If so, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Wood makes a motion, and then Mr. Richard second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries. All right, let's do Section 2, School Financial Statements, General Fund of Bank Credit Silviation and Fills and Accounts Altogether, if we have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Pepperidge makes the motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Mr. Richards makes the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries. Association of School Board dues. And we have, of course, that's a school board, so we, the annual dues for the Association of School Boards, thirteen thousand dollars. They did provide a good bit of training for us and everything, so I would recommend that we approve the payment of the AASB twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen dues. Okay? I'll make a motion. All right, Mr. Williams makes a motion, does he have a second? Mr. Wood, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries. All right, the business. Ms. Graves. Examiners of public accounts.
My name is William Graves, and I'm with the State of Alabama Department of Examiners of Public Accounts, and I'm here to present the audit report for the period October first, two thousand thirteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, in accordance with the Act of Alabama one ninety-six, which is the Student Fiscal Accountability Act. We conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and the standards applicable to financial audits containing government auditing standards issued by the Congress General of the United States. Those standards require that we plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free or material misstatement. An audit includes examining on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts of disclosures in the financial statements. An audit also includes assessing the accounting principles used and significant estimates made by management, as well as evaluating the overall financial statement presentation. And we believe that our audit provides a reasonable basis for our opinions. Our opinion was an unmodified opinion on the governmental activities and an unmodified opinion on each major bill. Also, as part of obtaining reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free or material misstatement, we performed tests of its compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements, noncompliance with which could have a direct and material effect on the determination of financial statement amounts. However, providing an opinion on compliance with those provisions was not an objective of our audit, and accordingly, we do not express such an opinion. The results of our tests disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. In addition, we've also audited the compliance of the board with types of compliance requirements described in the U.S. Office of Management and Budgets Article A one thirty-three compliance that were applicable to each of its major federal programs for the year ended September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. In our opinion, the board complied in all material respects with the requirements referred to above that are applicable to each of its major federal programs for the year ended September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Also concerning the board's major federal programs, we noted no matters involving the internal control over compliance and its operation that we consider to be reportable conditions or material weaknesses. There were no findings in the audit report for the two thousand fourteen fiscal year, and if you would like to see a copy of the report, you can go to our website at examiners.alabama.gov.
Thank you. Does any board member want to ask Ms. Graves any questions? I'm sure she'd be glad to hear. Appreciate it, Ms. Graves. Appreciate Mr. Cooper and the staff for doing a good job on the right this time. Any comments, any board members? All right, let's move on to leads of absence.
I'd like to, Father, recommend that we accept the following leads of absence. Ms. Aubrey Nugent, secondary man, art teacher at Crossville High, and Erica Harper, Assistant Secretary at Geraldine.
Our Chief, Harper, the recommendation on the ladies of absence, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes the audit. Mr. Pepperidge says, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries. We'll get to the bids.
Okay, we got the bids, good looking, item A, six A, those are the CMP renewal bids. In the original contract, there's a clause that each of the bids can roll over for three additional years, and those, the increase will stay the consumer price index, which is what we follow anyway. So Teresa Smith wants to follow those, I'd like to recommend that we just accept the bids that we're using now for the upcoming year for item A.
Okay, that's Cereal Lee, flavor-rich forest farm produce, juice alive. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Mr. Wood has a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Item six B, split bid, Academy County Community Program open bids on June tenth, and bids received from Prescott Dixie Store, Hall Incorporated Bubble Fixers, and Hotel Supply, Hotel Restaurant Supply. The bid results are on the next page. It looked, the total was eleven thousand five eighty-five. I think there was seven bids that were put in, and so the bids come across, and we've accepted the lowest bid on both that and the new cover the Craig, the Crossville Elementary and the Idaho School, the public candidates. I'd like to recommend we accept those two bids.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, only as we have a motion to approve. I'll make a motion. Mr. Pepperidge makes a motion, does he have a second? Mr. Wood, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries. Resignations, we want to do these all together?
We find them in.
Just do that, I agree.
I'd like to recommend the following resignations, retirements, and also non-renewals. Ms. Karen Pickett, JV cheerleading, coaching duties only, resignation Savannah. Anna Walker, varsity cheerleading, coaching duties only, resignation Collinsville. Riley Edwards, varsity baseball, coaching duties only, resignation Collinsville. Melissa Coker, coaching duties, cheerleading, coaching duties only, resignation Crossville Middle. Ashley Bryant, girls' basketball, coaching duties, resignation Crossville Middle. Jeff Brooks, varsity baseball, coaching duties only, resignation Plainview. Luke Pruitt, secondary social science teacher, and on coaching duties, resignation. Corey Hyman, band director, resignation Crossville High. Jason Jackson, secondary agro-science teacher, resignation Crossville High. Juanette Green, store worker, retirement five. Angela McLean, migrant advocate, retirement itinerant. Cynthia Phillips, elementary special ed teacher, retirement five. Brenda McKinnon, CMP worker, retirement five.
Our Chief heard the recommendation on resignations, retirements, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Williams makes a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries. Transfer, we'll go ahead and do these, any bids?
I'd like to recommend Ms. Janet Williams, Secretary at Plainview, to twelve-month payroll Secretary at Central Office.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, does he have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Pepperidge, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Mr. Williams, second, on that. Motion carries. Next one's out.
Okay, I'd like to recommend the transfer of Ms. Anna Murphy from itinerant instructional coach to Assistant Principal at Collinsville.
Our Chief heard the recommendation of Anna Murphy, she's transferred from itinerant instructional coach to Assistant Principal Collinsville, do we have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion. Mr. Pepperidge makes a motion, does he have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Wood, second, any discussion?
Is this the principal's recommendation, or is it just one of the recommendations?
Thank Ms. Murphy for doing an excellent job down there. Any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
I'd like to recommend the transfer of Ms. Teresa Smith, half elementary teacher, half Spanish teacher, to Plainview, to high school counselor at Collinsville.
Our Chief heard the motion to approve, Ms. Smith is the counselor at Collinsville, do we have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion. Mr. Pepperidge makes a motion, does he have a second? Mr. Wood, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Okay, I'd like to recommend the transfer of Ms. Missy Traskwell, elementary teacher at Collinsville, to elementary teacher at Crossville Elementary.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion. Mr. Pepperidge makes a motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
I'd like to recommend the following transfer of Ms. Felicia Mayfield, intervention teacher at Crossville High, to elementary teacher at Crossville Elementary.
Our Chief heard the recommendation from Ms. Mayfield, do we have a motion to approve?
I'm doing.
I'll second. Mr. Wood makes a motion, and Mr. Pepperidge, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
I'd like to recommend the transfer of Ronald Polis, secondary math, to Collinsville, to art instructional coach.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Wood makes a motion, does he have a second? Wish somebody a second, so you definitely wasn't wrong. Motion, aye, is likely, second.
Okay, I'd like to recommend Ms. Pauline Fountain, CMP worker at Crossville, to CMP Assistant Manager at Crossville.
Our Chief heard the motion, Ms. Fountain, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Pepperidge makes a motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Mr. Richards, second, any discussion? I mean, yeah, any discussion? All right, those, those four say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
I'd like to recommend the transfer of Ms. Jessica Mays, elementary teacher at Crossville Elementary, to elementary teacher at five.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, does he have a second? Mr. Wood, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries. Ms. Baldwin, I'm sorry.
Recommend Ms. Haley Baldwin, pre-K teacher, unitative pre-K teacher at five.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Mr. Pepperidge makes a motion, Mr. Williams, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
That was Mr. Richards.
What I said.
Pepperidge.
I made Richards. I get them mixed up a lot.
I got more hair than you got on one floor.
Y'all look a lot alike. All right, Mr. Richards makes a motion. Mr. Williams, second. I'm getting old, I can't see either side. All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
I'd like to recommend the transfer of Ms. Myra Dalton, four-hour custodian at five Special Service Center, to Assistant Secretary at five.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion?
I make the motion.
This Mr. Richards makes a motion. Second. Mr. Wood makes a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Amanda Woodall, elementary special ed at five Special Service Center, to elementary special ed at five.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards, he has a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Pepperidge, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Mr. Renee Beard, elementary teacher at Geraldine, to family consumer science teacher at Geraldine.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
I make it.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Mr. Josh Davis, elementary teacher at Collinsville, to elementary teacher at Geraldine.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, Mr. Davis, do we have a motion?
I make the motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, does he have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Pepperidge, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Mary Lance, Supervisor at Central Office, to eleven-month Principal at Moonlight.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
I make it.
Mr. Pepperidge makes a motion, does he have a second?
I'll do the Mr. Richards.
I keep saying, I don't know. I'm sorry. I get this right, because I was on the roll there for a while. I told him that I'm playing.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Richards, Mr. Pepperidge, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Chastidore, elementary teacher, retirement, to elementary teacher at Plainview.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Wood makes a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Richards makes a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Aye.
Let's prove to show that all of the women in favor, Mr. Williams Hilton, any access, motion access, next.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. April Hall, elementary teacher at Savannah, to elementary teacher at Plainview.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion. Mr. Williams makes a motion, does he have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Richards, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Rhonda Jones, CMP worker at Plainview, to bus driver at Plainview.
Our Chief heard the motion, you heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, does he have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Pepperidge, make a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Whitney Hodges, ISS teacher at Plainview, to elementary special ed at Plainview.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Wood makes a motion, does he have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Williams, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Brooke Deder, secondary ELA teacher at Crossville, to secondary ELA teacher at Plainview.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? I mean, heard motion, any motion? Mr. Wood makes a motion, does he have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Pepperidge, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend the transfer of Ms. Carrie Hunt, elementary special ed about head, to elementary special ed at Plainview.
Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Wood makes a motion, does he have a second? Motion, aye, is likely, second. Sorry, please.
Did make an adjustment on the agenda. Can I add out of G for this being as the item F?
Okay, under, under transfers?
F and G, F. Look at item F, there's a typo there that says Kim Osberg, we need to check that to elementary teacher. Item nine, elementary teacher at Crossville Middle. And item G, if you look at that, that was the next selection for the lead, that will be the actual position that will be the infield as was approved by Mr. Barnett. Second, Mr. Barnett, are you, is that correct? Yeah, I just want to make sure touch base with him on that. So add out of U, which will be Justin Brown, filling of the secondary. Okay.
Add him.
Let's do.
Yeah, take the extra one.
Take one. Take one will be Justin Brown, filling the secondary language arts league. I'll make a motion, carry on, just a second. See if that makes it up top, that's cause to show up here. All right, all placement, my opinion, a background view, made suitability criteria to negative pre-employment drug screening, and as well as the appropriate certification. I'd like to recommend Mr. Adam Lawrence, middle school math teacher at Iowa.
Our Chief heard the recommendation and the motion. Mr. Wood, makes a motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Richards, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Recommend Ms. Amanda Hayes, elementary teacher at Iowa, to fill one-year lead.
Mr. Wood makes the motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Mr. Richards, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend Ms. Preston Taylor, pre-K teacher at Collinsville, of no relation.
We got a recommendation, do we have a motion? Mr. Pepperidge, make a motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wood, he's the second. Any discussion?
You're quick on getting that in.
Mr. Wood, that's ridiculous.
Been a hot topic.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
I'd recommend Ms. Cassie Clifton, elementary teacher at Collinsville.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Pepperidge makes a motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams makes a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend Shane Stewart, elementary teacher at Collinsville.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pepperidge makes a motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Mr. Richards, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have.
Recommend Ms. Kim Osborne, elementary teacher at Crossville Middle.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, we have to say, hey, check that one, because I thought it was Crossville Elementary.
It's Crossville.
Crossville, okay.
Do we have those? Mr. Pepperidge makes that motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
I'd like to recommend Ms. Amelia Fugit, secondary language arts, Collinsville.
Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Pepperidge makes a motion, does he have a second? Mr. Wood makes a second, do we have a, any discussion?
That's her lead, that's a plain view, right?
That's the position.
Yeah. He didn't have Ms. Osborne in for the, all right, I'm getting it clear now.
I'll make sure. Justin, y'all, that's correct, right? That's why I make sure we get that clear. Yes. Just want to represent.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend Ms. Alexa Williams, elementary teacher, Crossville Middle.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Mr. Pepperidge makes a motion, does he have a second? Mr. Richards, I got you, yes. I'm an automatic pilot, I don't.
I can't read anything.
There's a lot of, lot of, I'm out of this time.
I'll second.
Mr. Williams, second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
I shouldn't, I shouldn't be quick to say no relation thing.
All right, so let's show that all board members voting in favor of Mr. Pepperidge's staying, motion carries.
Recommend Mr. Sid Gilliam, secondary history at Crossville High.
All right, we have a motion to approve. I'll make a motion. Mr. Pepperidge, makes a motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wood makes a second, any discussion? All those in favor. All right. Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion, you can take a break. All right, thanks.
Recommend replacement of Brad Martin, elementary teacher at five.
Our Chief heard the recommendation, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards, makes that motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wood makes a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend Whitney Staple, elementary teacher at Geraldine.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, does he have a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second, any discussion?
One quick comment to Mr. Taylor last month, well, during all this process, the principals at Geraldine, they interviewed many, many people, they come up with the top three folks that they wanted, and the last meeting we approved, or Mr. Taylor recommended, we approved the first two out of the three, and tonight, this young lady is Thursday, so I just want to thank you for recommending what the president wanted.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend Ms. Sarah Goodwin, pre-K teacher at Plainview.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, does he have a second? Mr. Pepperidge, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend Pat Vincent, secondary history health teacher at Plainview.
Our chief recommendation, we have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, does he have a second? Or Mr. Wood makes a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend Ms. Chrissy Benson, middle school math, science teacher at Plainview.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Richards, second, any discussion? All those in favor, second. Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend the Glenn Deder, secondary biology, civilian.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, does he have a second?
Mr. Pepperidge, second, any discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend Mr. Alex Moore, secondary history, civilian.
All right, do we have a motion? Mr. Richards makes a motion.
I'll second.
And Mr. Williams, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, motion carries.
Recommend Ms. Ashley Williamson, secondary English language arts, Savanion.
I make a motion approved? Mr. Wood makes a motion, I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. Williams second, in discussion. All, all those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend Mr. Kyle Cox, as a secondary special ed, Billy Hill.
I make a motion approved? Mr. Wood makes a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Richards second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend Ms. Ashley Smith, pre-K teacher, Valletta.
Have a motion? First, Mr. Wood, and second?
Second.
Mr. Pepper second. In discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend Mr. Sam Graham, PDP teacher, Valletta.
Have a motion approved? Mr. Wood makes a motion. Second? Mr. Richards, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Uh, item two one, uh, recommend Justin Brown to fill the secondary language arts league at Collinsville.
That, that takes from what we had at G. Right, we have a motion to approve. I'll make the motion. Mr. Pepper makes a motion, I'll second. Mr. Williams second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers. Support.
Uh, support, like recommend Ms. Tiffany Harris, bus driver at Crossville.
Motion approved? I make a motion, Mr. Pepper, I'll second.
Second.
Mr. Williams, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed? Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend Ms. Lori Briggs, pre-K A, Collinsville.
Have a, have a motion? I make a motion, Mr. Pepper makes a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Richards second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend Ms. Rebecca Queen, store worker at five.
Have a motion?
I make the motion.
Mr. Richards, we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams makes a second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend Robin Hood, assistant custodian, Southern Hour five.
Have a motion approved?
I make the motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, second. Mr. Wood seconds. In discussion. We like that, Matt?
We could have, we could have had, maybe Nottingham.
All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend Mr. Adeel, twelfth-class custodian, Savanion.
Have a motion approved? Mr. Richards makes a motion, second? I'll second. Mr. Wood second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend Nikki Bowden, pre-K A, Valletta.
Have a motion? Mr. Wood makes a motion, I'll second. Second, Mr. Richards second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend Brittany Dubose, sign language interpreter, translator, high generation sister.
Have a motion approved?
I make it.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. Pepper second, in discussion. Who does that applies to?
It's not, is Miss Dan there?
Yes. It's a new place.
Is it funded, I suppose, funded place? Uh, in discussion, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed? Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Coach Suppless, want to recommend Adam Lawrence, varsity boys, basketball at Iowa.
We have a motion approved? Mr. Wood makes a motion, I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. Richards second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend Mr. Sid Gilliam, assistant football coach, Crossville High.
Have a motion approved? Mr. Pepper makes a motion, second. Mr. Williams second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend Mr. Sam Graham, head football coach, Valletta.
I make a motion approved? Mr. Wood, you make a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Richards second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed? Ayes have a motion, cheers.
When you take all these together, there's a lot more going on.
Do those, uh...
Unless you even want to pull it out.
Do, do eight, do one.
Okay.
Eight, three, one, eight, four, hour.
We'd like to recommend the following contractors, from Mr. Lucas Bodes, video education, uh, central office, Tanner Nelson, summer grounds worker at Collesville. Melissa Smith, summer grounds worker at Collesville. John Cole, summer grounds worker at Crossville Middle. James Lawson, summer grounds worker at Crossville High. Nicholas Fletcher, summer grounds worker at Geraldine. Eduardo Gutierrez, summer, summer grounds worker at Geraldine. Dylan Clark, summer grounds worker at Hendrick. Harold Lawson, summer grounds worker at Ida. Austin Price, summer grounds worker at Plainview. Bryce Smith, summer grounds worker at Plainview. Stacey Sykes, summer grounds worker at Rahama. Amanda Abbott, summer grounds worker at Savanion. Frank Taylor, summer grounds worker at Valletta. Tim Turner, summer grounds worker at Tech Center. Austin Staple, summer grounds worker at Facilities. Lindsay Putnam, summer grounds worker at Savanion. And Mr. Jacob Payne, summer grounds worker at five.
All right. You heard the recommendation, have a motion approved?
I make it.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, second. Mr. Wood makes a second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed? Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Recommend contract, uh, for one month, to uh, Mr. Emery Mann, computer tech, facilities.
Aren't you for the, uh, you heard the recommendation, have a motion? Mr. Wood makes a motion, I'll second. Motion dies, I'll make a second. Community action.
Okay, who's agreeing? If you look at item ten, B, you will see, I mean, uh, it's just a contract on this and the uh, community action at the start. It's just a, it's a, it's a, uh, the type of stuff that we provide to them. Like recommend we, uh, give that on track.
Aren't you for the, uh, you heard the recommendation, we have a motion approved?
Make the motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. Pepper second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed? Ayes have a motion, cheers.
We have, uh, the next item, we have our policy manual, supposed to be laid on the table in thirty days. Uh, we have had, uh, some input from local associations, uh, with, uh, Rick, and we're going, recommend the following changes to those items. I'm going to read them right quick. Just want to, you know, have a... If you look at the first item, it says page twenty G, said the words suspend, and replace it with what the law is, and that's to place on administrative leave with pay. That's the recommendation. Uh, also, uh, we'd like to correct item two, which is on page sixty-seven, five, five, one, added clarifying sentence. Uh, there might, might have been a misunderstanding there, that teachers lose tenure status when they move up in ranks, and that's not so. But I, the added sentence that clarified should say, teachers with tenure status shall not lose their continuing service as a teacher during process. So we want to correct that. Uh, item three, page, on page seventy-five, five, uh, point eighteen, point fifteen, item D, uh, we're going to remove that section as it's unnecessary. Uh, we don't have to add any further regulations if you see that statement, uh, we just have to follow the law. So we're going to remove that. And then item seventy-nine, five point two, seven point one, item eight, and, uh, as it is related to, uh, page eighty-five, twenty-seven, two, eight, we're going to remove the first sentence and replace it with the following sentence, which reflects the law. It says a reduction in force, uh, may take place when the board determines that it need exist as a result of a decrease in student enrollment, shortages of revenue, or a state mandate, which reflects what our law states. And our policy was more restricted, and it added programs, program change, consolidation, reorganization, those items. So we want to line that back up with what the law states. So I'd like to add these corrections to the manual as to next month will be, uh...
Just in thirty days.
Right after thirty days, after it's laid on the table, I'd like to create, make these corrections.
Does that answer questions?
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for bringing our attention. It's a lot of hard work, but we'd like to get that done.
We don't have to take any action on that.
No, we just, just add those changes as we've, uh, adopted in next, next, next month. Okay, uh, to look at, uh, items, uh, ten D, uh, so budget amendment, uh, we have decreed these extended contracts, we have two of those, uh, ones for Joey Ham and Mr. Terry Johnson, those are done every summer. Uh, they apply for those and get those extended contracts. And then, uh, the other budget amendment is the carryover funds, you see the, uh, the numbers there, I'd like to recommend that, uh, we accept that amendment.
Aren't you for the recommendation, very much?
I make the motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. Wood makes a second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed nay. Ayes have a motion, cheers.
Okay, uh, the next item, we've been looking at, uh, we have two schools that have high school soccer and JV, and, uh, the supplement has been just for one and a half percent for those head coaches. And, uh, we'd like to lay on the table, uh, to up the, the varsity to three point five percent and to JV to one point five, which aligns with our other scores that line up with that type of...
That would agree with softball, baseball, and that's the same score. No, no real, no, no kind of a motion or anything.
No, just lay it on the table for discussion, and anything needs to be adjusted or comments made can be made, and then we'll, uh, make recommendations to be set to next month.
All right, board members, we have any board members that have any, any, any kind of...
One thing that, uh, you know, so can evaluation, that's coming up in this time period, we sent out, uh, the evaluation, all the board members, and, uh, and let Mr. Wood and Mr. Williams take, uh, that little lead on that. He may not, well, I say.
He's the vice chair, so, uh, I think he probably should take a little...
So we'll, uh, when you get your evaluations, uh, send them to, to Mr. Williams and go layer on that. Do the same with what we did last year. Any other board members, y'all got anything at all? Uh, we have, uh, new DEA and ESP officers, Espo officers. Would you like to, uh, does any of your officers here?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Laura Hill.
She's got one left her hand back there.
Okay, we'll just, we'll just introduce, Diana Church is the president, Laura Hill, vice president, uh, Terry Hunter, secretary, she's back there, and Sheena Hughes, treasurer. Glad, uh, glad to have you on, and we're working with you. Do you have any, any things you want to discuss with us?
Uh, no, I just wanted to hear she, like...
No. You don't have to.
I promise, it, it's all good. Uh, Mr. Tucker, we want to say thank you for allowing us to have our summer conference, uh, you know, at Plainview and the City Center. Uh, we would love for you to come by, if, if you're available, it's next Tuesday. Welcome everyone, uh, board members, y'all are welcome to come and attend any of the sessions we have, or come by to, to say hello. Uh, we start at eight in the morning, and we finish at about three forty-five, four o'clock. And, uh, we hope that you will, uh, accept the CVs for your place today, so, thank you.
So that's on what, what is that, the, uh...
Tuesday, the twenty-third. Yes, ma'am.
And that's going to be where?
At the City Center, at the Coliseum, I'm sorry. At, at Plainview.
Any, any plans? All right, Espo has new officers also, uh, this doesn't seem like very new officer thing.
It's not.
What, what happens, you make them once you're, level up, once you're president, you don't get to break them?
Just get it.
Is there not a law?
For eight years, you have to be off that prayer.
Mary, Mary Joe. Is it, is it unterm?
Yeah. We should have passed that way, you don't turn to...
That way, okay, we have a president, Mary Jo Chandler, vice president, Joyce Dow Rample, secretary Denise Parker, and treasurer, basically. Glad to have you on, and you, uh, Mary Jo, you're having fun.
I just thank you for offering me this great year of time, and I've done my best to be nice, which I'm going to say. I'm going to have a hump, and I'm going to tell you if I'm not going to be nice, but I do appreciate that you're willing to have me. What will it be, a lesson, what is it?
Thank you. All right, the date of our next meeting is July the ninth, we're going to have, kind of have two meetings next month, uh, there, there's so much goes on during the summertime, and move transfers and things, and so we're going to try to have two meetings next month, if not possible. Next week, please, July the ninth, five o'clock. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I do.
Mr. Wood makes a motion, okay. Mr. Pepper makes a second, I'll make a second, say aye.